Good evening. It's 6:30 on Monday, April 26, 2021, and I now call the Winton Woods City School District Regular Board of Education meeting to order. During this meeting, we ask that all attendees wear masks at all times unless speaking. With that said, our first item on the agenda is 1.02, which is the Pledge of Allegiance. Please join me. Please stand and join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for Next item on the agenda is 1.03. Mr. Seymour, will you please call the roll?
Mr. McGowan's, Mr. Birdy?
Here.
Dr. Cufaletti?
Here.
Dr. Johnson?
Present.
Mrs. Ruggles?
Present.
The next item on the agenda is 2.01, which is District Honors, Recognitions, Gifts, and Introductions. Mr. Smith, you have the floor.
Dr. Arnold, to the podium. Now, we have a packed house because we've had several months where we were delayed. And I do believe that the young people decided we're going to kind of boycott the operation so we won't get the awards in the old building. So I think they chose to get it here, and they kept trying to act like they were not available. So here we are.
All right, I'll go through them. The Kiwanis Character is Key Awards. You have caring. Winton Woods Intermediate School, you have Samuel Matkins. Next, you have Trustworthiness from Winton Woods Middle School, Jack Oliver.
Come on up, Jack.
Come on up, Jack. There we go. And Citizenship from Winton Woods High School, Goma Nippon. All right, Kiwanis Students of the Month Awards for December. I'm gonna try my best. For January, we have Arianna McKinney. For February, we have Reggie Davis. Next, we'll have Skyline Student Athletes of the Month. For December, this individual is a member of the football team and is superlatives for the seniors. He was voted Best Athlete. In addition, he accepted a full scholarship to play football for Miami University. That would be Caleb Tubbs. For January, we have an individual who has a 4.0 for the first half of the year. In addition, he competes for both the golf and bowling team. That would be Maximo De La Rosa III. And our final scholar athlete for, or the Skyline Student Athlete of the Month, who's not here, but for February, would be Ashley Johnson. Skyline Teacher of the Month Awards for December, Winton Woods Middle School, Ms. Meredith Dixon.
Dr. Arnold?
Thank you.
Arianna McKinney?
Arianna McKinney. Okay, for the month of January again, Kiwanis Student of the Month Award, Arianna McKinney. Back to Skyline Teacher of the Month Awards for January, Winton Woods Intermediate School, we have Ms. Katie Chadwick. And for February, for Winton Woods Elementary School, we have Ms. Claire Kramer. And that's your awards.
Yeah, I'd like to just add that Ms. Meredith Dixon gets all of her inspiration from Mr. Adib Dixon, who was one of our assistant principals. So, Mr. Dixon, can you stand up, please, so we can recognize you a little bit? All right. Remember, there's no Meredith without Adib. So there's a special recognition now. I am so happy she just came in. Taylin Westmoreland. Taylin wrote a book during the pandemic, and it was been, she, it was inspired by her family, and is quarantined and eight. She was eight at the time. She's grown now. She's nine. And this book is absolutely amazing. So we actually are going to create a big poster. The other thing that we're gonna do, there's gonna be a book signing for her, for all of the third grade students in her class, they're gonna have a book signing for her. I have officially decided that I would be her agent and help her through some of the turmoil. But Taylin is, she is a, just an amazing young lady. She's been on several TV shows, and we just did a great program on her doing Way Cross. Her family is here tonight, but I'd like to just kind of show you a picture, this poster that we're going to frame. This book is actually gonna be famous because she has her personal signature down there, and this is just for me, and I'm gonna place it on my wall, and I think it's gonna be a great, great experience. So Taylin, I know you're not shy. You're in Project Based Learning, so we work on your articulation and your presentation. We'd like for you to come up to the mic and say a few words about your book.
Eight quarantine is about how I had fun, but was being safe at the same time. And when I was bored, I wrote a book and told about what I did in quarantine when COVID hit and how I survived, mostly.
Dr. Johnson, because they're with the same family group. Taylin, stay up, stay up to the podium, and we'd like to bring Mom and Dad up for a picture, Mom has about 85 of those sweatshirts. She wears them everywhere that she goes.
This is what manager does.
Okay, all right, I remember that. We also are inviting Taylin to the ribbon-cutting ceremony of her new school, and that's gonna be another exciting event. So thank you to the family, thank you to the great author, and that book is absolutely inspirational. The next special recognition will be to AG Parts. AG Parts is a worldwide company, and they donated $2,500 in safety equipment that we desperately needed. They are actually out of Pennsylvania, I believe, and they couldn't make it tonight, but we're, we really wanted them to come, and we wanted to make sure that we extended our appreciation to the $2,500 in protective equipment. The next recognition is for Ms. Jane Weber. Is she here tonight? Ms. Weber actually contributed 30 winter coats, gloves, and hats for fifth and sixth grade students, and with a value over $500, and I'm sure the principal, Day, really appreciated. So thank you when we see Ms. Weber. We'll come back next month, and hopefully she'll be ready to come back and join us because she does need to make sure that we have that recognition. The next person is the coaches. I'd like for Mr. Merrill to come up and talk a little bit about our coaches.
Well, it's with my pleasure. We had a very busy last couple of months when it came to our athletic department. We had a little surprise with our football coach resigning, which left us in a position that we could start anew. And I don't think we could have found a better person to replace Coach Parker than the gentleman that we decided to go with. He jumped right in, he continued the weight programs, he continued the football program moving forward during the search, and then as the search came full circle, he was the right man for the job, and we couldn't be more excited than our hire here for Chad Murphy as our head football coach.
There you go.
Thank you, Ms. Merrill. Mr. Smith, thank you, and the Board of Education, Mr. Martin, and Mr. Lumpkin. I'm very thankful and blessed for this opportunity. It's a wonderful place. I've been here about a year, about a year now, and growing up in the area and knowing of the great place this has been for many, many years. Just really thankful and blessed. Actually, interviewed with Troy Everhart 20 years ago, and I've heard multiple stories about Coach Sincar, and I know the shoes that are filled, that have to be filled around here. It's an unbelievable opportunity. Like I said, I'm very thankful and blessed. I want to win a lot of football games like we're so used to around here, but just want to have great young men that'll represent our school district to the utmost. So very thankful for this opportunity.
Mr. Murphy, before you step away from the mic, can you give us a little bit about your background, where you've been, where you coached?
Yes, sir. I started right out of college as an intern with the Buffalo Bills, went from there to a little small school up north, Middletown, or Monroe High School, went to the Final Four a couple of times there, went down to Vero Beach, Florida, a top-10 program in the state of Florida, went to Lincoln University, HBCU in Jefferson City, Missouri, came back home, spent a little bit of time at Mount Healthy, went to Northwest High School, got 2012 State of Ohio Coach of the Year, spent six years as a head football coach at Hamilton Big Blue and the GMC, and spent two seasons ago at Archbishop Moeller High School.
Yeah, when we, when we saw your resume, it was very impressive, and all the travels and all the places you've been, I thought you were about 94 years old. But I think you must have started coaching when you were like nine?
About 20, about 22.
Okay. But I think that, and I wanted, I wanted the Board as well as the audience to hear about your resume. It was, it was a very, very, you know, tedious search, and we found somebody right in our own backyard. The kids that were on the interview committee absolutely love your style, they appreciate your growth that you're gonna take them to, and thank you very, very much for accepting the position.
Yes, sir. Blessed.
All right. Mr. Merrill?
And as this search continued, and Coach Murphy was putting his staff together, a name that continuously popped up in this football conversation was a young man that grew up in our own backyard here, was an All-American for us. And I think this was a homerun hire as well, or should I say a slam dunk, because he's also gonna be our varsity girls' basketball coach, our defensive coordinator, and I'd like to welcome home Carlton Gray.
Mr. Merrill, I have to tell you that after the interview, I almost really ruined this for the district because I met Mr. Gray in the conference room, and I know he's had some professional experience and also Division One experience, and I told him that I thought he was taller, and... I did, sir. I thought you were like 6'5". So we, I just want to make sure we're gonna get our money's worth, because you're not as tall as I thought you were. When I'm taller than a professional athlete, that's a problem.
I was sitting down when you met me. You can walk over here right now.
So, so...
I like him.
Mr. Gray, in the future, when I speak to you, sir, put your mask on, okay?
I appreciate, it's been a long time, and it seems like every other year or so, I've been asked to come back home. I joke with everybody and say that I graduated from Forest Park High School, so this is kind of, the green hills, I still gotta get used to that being part of our system now, but I'm happy to be back. I'm excited to be back. My oldest daughter, Amber Gray, who you guys will learn about her story, she's tremendous. She's gonna be helping me coach the girls, and we just, we just think that we'll have a positive impact on them, teaching them how to get better, teaching them how to become strong women, and giving them an opportunity to see another avenue for college. That's our goal. Obviously, football, everybody knows about how much I've been coaching, how much I love football, and I think that regardless of everything else, just to show these kids that someone from this area can do well in school, can achieve success with sports, it gives them something to strive for, and they don't have to read about it, they can see it every single day. You guys will hear, you'll probably hear me coaching more than you'll hear me talk. I'm not much of a talker, but I'm a loud coach, so hopefully, hopefully we do good things around here, and I'm looking forward to being here. Thanks for having me back.
Coach, can you give a little bit about your resume?
Okay, I went to Forest Park High School, graduated Forest Park High School in 1989, went to UCLA, played football, graduated from UCLA in 1993, played eight years professionally with various teams, the Kansas City Chiefs, the Seattle Seahawks, the Indy Colts, and the New York Giants. Once I retired, I officially became Amber Gray's father because she was, she was making a name for herself, and nobody remembered who I was or what I did. I've just been riding her coattails for the last few years, and now I have a younger daughter. Now I have a younger daughter who's, who will be a senior in high school next year, who's doing some pretty remarkable things on her own in basketball. So we're just, we're just happy to be back and happy to make an impact. For the last 12, I actually started working at Lakota West in 2005. That's where my oldest daughter graduated from, so I've just been in the school over there, kind of working in the building, helping kids and coaching sports, and finally felt like this was the time to make an impact over here where I grew up. My father still lives in Forest Park, my mom lives in Springdale. I'm blessed to have them around still, and when they heard that I was coming back to Winton Woods, they couldn't have been more excited. I haven't seen them that happy in a long time because they're very big on giving back, trying to make an impact in the community, and this is just, just time for me. So I'm looking forward very much to doing what I can around here.
Can you give your daughter an intro so she can come up and say a few words, please?
We were in the gym working out, so forgive us, our... Parents, we were trying to get straight to work, but I couldn't be more happy to finally be able to say my dad's doing something for, for his community where he came from and able to do what he loves, you know, for the kids. Like he said, he was Amber Gray's father. Now I'm blessed and honored to be able to say, you know, I'm here for him, to be able to work with him, and to be able to give back to this community. It means a lot. I was born here, I grew up, and I lived right around the corner, and then went out to Lakota West where I graduated, and ended up going to the University of Tennessee where I played for Coach Summit for two years before dealing with some health complications, and I ended up transferring back here, played at Xavier where I graduated, then coached collegiately for, what, three years before I ended up going overseas and playing again. I'm one of those people who I just can't hang up my shoes, except for when COVID hits and it kind of shuts the world down. So now I'm here with the opportunity to be able to coach alongside my mentor, you know, my coach, the person who got me back after having a stroke and a brain aneurysm. So when I tell you guys this program is in great hands, he knows what he's talking about. Even though he might not have played professionally in basketball, I can still beat him, so that, you know, that's a kind of iffy on that.
Why is everybody more challenged?
Coach Gray, I can say, because I have the best seat in the house, you are taller than your dad, all right?
No, he, yeah.
Yeah, you are.
It's just my head is a little more of a cone shape this way. You know, but we're excited to get to hit the ground and go, and we're excited to be able, again, not only help these young ladies on the court, but really help them off the court. You know, I have a nonprofit, and you know, our plan is to be able to incorporate that in everything that we'll do. Actually gonna be an aide with, to coach this school year, so I'll be in the building as well to make sure that we stay on top with our academics because that comes first, and prepare them where they want to play basketball, whatever they want to do after that.
So I'd just like to say, we have some exciting, we have an author, we have coaches, we have professionals, we have people who love coming back to the community, and I appreciate you guys very much for returning. I'm sure Lakota is sad, but that's how it turns out. We know.
It is what it is. Look, I follow his footsteps.
All right, fantastic. So the next person's coming up, Mr. Denny, I'd like you to come up and take the mic and introduce our amazing friend, Mr. Jeff Parker.
Thanks very much, Mr. Smith. I'd love to. Good evening, Board. Good evening, everybody. It's so great to see a full house. It's been a while, so it's great to sort of be back together again. So, Mr. Gray mentioned he's a Forest Park alum. We have another Forest Park alum in the house tonight. Forest Park Charger class of Mr. Parker. 86, thank you. So I probably can't say enough great things about, about Mr. Parker. There's so much of him in this building that we stand in today, that we sit in this evening. There's so much of him in the South Campus building that we want to make sure everyone understands. This week, actually, coming up are two open houses for the community to be able to come in and see what, you know, what we've been able to accomplish, what the community's been able to so graciously support. And, Mr. Parker, there's so much of you in both these buildings, so it's really, you've really come full circle to be giving back to our community in the way that you have. These buildings are a blessing to us as a staff, as a community, as a group of students, and we just really appreciate what you've done. And for you to then take another step, and I don't want to, I'm not gonna step on your coattails too much here, or steal your thunder, but for you to do what you've done this evening is pretty overwhelming. So without too much further going on on my part, I'd like to invite you up to the podium. Mr. Jeff Parker?
Actually, if I can stay here for the sake of time, it'd probably be better.
Of course.
I'll try to speak up, and I'm gonna invite a coworker, your friend of mine and coworker to join me. This is Carrie Malatesta. She is our senior interior designer, so look to what you see in here and at the other campus. Came out of Carrie's hard work, so Carrie, I wanted to give her the chance to rest her off.
Well, thanks for inviting us tonight. It's really great to actually be in front of people and interacting with people, but thank you for the privilege to be part of the design team. It was truly a collaborative effort, and we couldn't have done it on our own, so there's lots of familiar faces in the room, so it's always really great to come back and see you all, but we really appreciate being a part of the team. And I think, you know, during the whole design process, which was a long process that involved lots of meetings that were very collaborative, it was always top of mind what's best for the students. And I think you will start to see that when you work this building and the South Campus, that was always top of mind. And I will say, we've been doing this for...
Too long.
A little while, and that's not always the case, so I think you should be really proud of that part of it and how that played into the design of the overall building. And we just love to come back, and I can't wait to see the building in use in a normal time. Obviously, we're kind of in an odd situation, we're not being able to use all the spaces as designed, but you'll definitely see us come back and see how things are being used. I troll people on Twitter and Facebook so I can see how the different spaces are being used. So thank you so much for the privilege to be part of this, this design process.
So as a, as a Charger, I'm obligated to ask Coach Gray what section you live in.
I grew up in Forest Park, Forest, on the D section.
The D section. What street?
Dewdrop, sir.
Oh, I grew up on Danbury. We used to play football over on Dewdrop. Awesome. Let's see. Mrs. Ruggles, and Mr. Smith, if you'd be kind enough to help me unwrap what we've got kind of stashed over here on the wall. So one of the mantras that we heard through years of design meetings was the idea of trust, respect, and responsibility. And this district really walks the talk. They don't just talk about it, they make sure it happens, and we're excited to be a part of it. Carrie has summed up our commitment and our excitement to be here tonight. We know that, well, in many of our meetings, we heard stories where teachers would bring in their own tools to help students take their projects to the next level. I think Coach C and making catapults or trebuchets, right? And we didn't want that to be just kind of a one-time thing, we wanted that to occur on a more regular basis. So we provided a set of tools for both the North Campus and for the South Campus, and it is our hope that the kids will use the style of them, and that they won't injure And I'll just close by saying, we really believe in what is happening here in Winton Woods. Jeremiah tells us that there are good plans for us.
All right.
Plans to give us a hope and a future. And it is, it's my prayer that these small things and this building, we have a small hand, who will play some small role in helping those plans come up. So thank you very much. The other, the other part of it, I'm not sure if people know that there's a scene shop in the school where we'll make our own, our own displays, our own scenes for musicals, and these power tools will actually help us do that. I think people need to also understand that you can receive scholarships by being in a scene design set, lighting, sound. So we're gonna go full circle and create this thing where our kids get a chance to explore life in a different way, other than some traditional educational experiences. We want to broaden our horizon. So, Mr. Parker, thank you very, very much.
I believe our December Student of the Month arrived, Surendra Bandari. Can you come on up and get your award, please? And I believe that we want a photo with all of our award recipients, please?
Yes, so Ms. Jackson and Ms. Jordan will escort you to the next room over where we will actually get photographs so that we can use them for our catalog about our, all of our awards and our recipients, so that we don't miss an opportunity. So they'll move you to the side, and President Ruggles?
Do the next item?
Yes.
Okay. If the Board, if it's okay with the Board, I'd like to move to public comments. We have one from Ms. Sandra Dees, and then we'll go back to the reset, since we have a full house. Ms. Sandra Dees, would you please take the podium? Welcome.
But this has been a long time coming, to be able to stand in our brand-new building. To be able to stand in our brand-new building. I don't want to miss the opportunity to give credit to whom credit is due. So if you'll help me give the one who made it happen a round of applause. And for those of you who don't know, I'm referring to the Lord, okay? All right. Now, back to it. Good evening, Superintendent, Board members, friends and family. It's so great to be here with you. Congratulations, Wenton Woods family. You did it. You actually did it. We have done what have, we have been needing and wanting for years. Brand-new schools. I'd like for you to give yourselves a round of applause. You did it. Now the children will not get rained on. You heard the cries of the children. Thank you. Thank you again and again. You should be extremely proud of yourselves. You are providing them with the best to be competitive and secure brighter futures. My daughter Catherine was part of the best four-by-two team when she was here. She was the first leg and got out the block quickly, giving her team the advantage to win because they depended on her. She never let them down. She pushed herself and sacrificed because others were depending on her. They won over and over and over. How many of you like track? I love it. It is absolutely wonderful. Now, let's recap. We're on a four-by-two team as well, everybody in this room and beyond. Like a four-by-two race, we are not running alone, but as a team. The first leg was to pass the levy. We did it. Congratulations. Get excited. We're in a beautiful, brand-new school. Second leg was groundbreaking. We did it. Congratulations again. Oh, my gosh, I am super excited. Third leg was to build the new schools. You're sitting in it. We're on the last leg, team, and we must, we have to bring it on home to the finish line. Woo! Excuse me, hallelujah. We must and we will pass this operating levy. Our great teachers are depending on it. Our great bus drivers who drive the children every day to get here. Our great cooks who prepare the meals. The janitors, everybody's depending on it. Every single leg of a race is crucial. One without the other is only partial victory. For you see, we are leaving a legacy that will span for decades and decades to come. The overarching operative is your children's children, and their children will benefit from your sacrifice. Life is all about sacrifices. He was our sacrifice. When you're working on advanced degrees, you sacrifice time, sometimes family, events, and effort. But the end result is fabulous. Let's look at the bigger picture. We actually have what most districts are desiring. They're dreaming about it, and we have it. Now that we have been blessed, let's pull together and make sure, absolutely sure, that it remains beautiful, functional, woo, hallelujah, and a beacon of hope for all that drive by this beautiful edifice. We are a shining light that burns brightly. Don't let fear and uncertainty of what the future holds captivate you. But just remember who holds the future, and your faith and your confidence will be solidified. We can, we must, we will finish this four-by-two race and obtain our reward. A district that is able to take care of its own in every way. That's the Wenton Woods District I have come to know and sincerely love. I love the district. To God be the glory for all the things that he has done and what he is getting ready to do. Run with me to the finish line. Vote for issue eight on May 3rd. I know, I know, we're all getting older, and you're wondering, well, how am I going to do it? Well, if he took care of you when you were young, he's the same, and he'll take care of you in your older years. We are in it to win it. Let's leave a legacy that we will be proud of. On behalf of the entire Dees family, Carrie Senior, Carrie Junior, Marcus, Catherine, Daniel, Cassandra, Constance, Louise, and Darnell. Woo! All eight of our children. See, we've been here 20 years, so it's not like we tipping in. It's not like we're strangers, and I love the fact that all of the alumni are coming home. Woo! Hallelujah! How powerful is that? How powerful is that? That speaks volumes.
Ms. Dees?
Yes, I'm on my way.
Thank you.
And so what I want to say is this. Congratulations. Job well done. Give your neighbor sitting next to you a hand clap. Amen, amen, and thank you so much. I love the district. Superintendent, I love you.
I love you more. Ms. Dees, thank you for naming that whole football team. Man, it was amazing.
Basketball, baseball.
Right.
Thank you, Ms. Dees. Thank you, Ms. Dees. And before we, we move on, I just want to say that it is so wonderful to be back in person and really to have the opportunity to see some of the stuff that Wenton Woods is made of. Jeff Parker, thank you so much for everything that you've done and to hear, to see the students receive their gifts. And I don't know for the Kiwanis, the students who won Kiwanis gifts, there is something on the back of that that you want to check in into. There was envelope on the back of that. So when you get home, go ahead and check on that. And as well as welcoming the new coaches, these are, this is some of the things that Wenton Woods is made of. And you mentioned Jeremiah, 29 and 11. I know the plans. And because there's so many people that have vision and plans for Wenton Woods City School District, we will continue to thrive. Thank you, Ms. Dees.
We, we missed an opportunity, but I don't want to make, I want to make sure we capture it. There is a representative from the Kiwanis group, and they give so much to the district. And I'd like for you to come up and say a few words, if you don't mind.
Well, thank you for putting me on the spot, Mr. Smith. I have no words prepared. I actually am glad I came to this meeting because I have three potential speakers for future Kiwanis meetings that I want to make sure our club is always knowing what's going on in this district. We are very close to this district. I just read scholarship applications, and when I read those, I often have to wipe tears from my eyes because of the passion I see in some of those kids. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. So Ms. Jackson and Ms. Jordan will take the families. And please, guys, don't slip out on me. We need your pictures because we're creating these incredible catalogs. And then the last part, everybody knows that COVID is here, and we're dealing with it, and people have received the vaccine. But we want to take our district to another level. We've been working on something very creative, and I'd like for you guys to participate in it if you can. We're working on a Wenton Woods Healthy Cookbook. And we'd like for you to turn in some of your incredible recipes, and hopefully one day we'll have this big cook-off and just make this an exciting experience for, for everyone. The vaccine is one part of it, but then the healthy lifestyles go along with it. So thank you, and we hope that when we send you the information out, you send in one of your greatest recipes. I know you have thousands of them, just give us one. All right? So, thank you very much. So, Ms. Jordan and Ms. Jackson, you can lead the people through and make sure we keep the social distancing in effect. Okay, all right? Two doors that you can go through, but let's make sure we get the pictures of families. It will go quick. Mrs., I'm sorry. Wait, 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 wait. Ms. Rugless, I apologize. Go ahead.
No, I was going to ask you, is this just for the students or for everybody who receive recognition?
Everyone who receive recognition. Yes, ma'am.
Okay. The next item on the agenda is a recess, and we'll take a five-minute recess, but we're also going to go into executive session right after recess. So, board, I will need a motion.
Madam President, I will make a motion to go into executive session for the appointment, for consideration of the employment, dismissal, discipline, promotion, demotion, or compensation of a public employee, employee or official.
Thank you, Mr. Verdi.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Dr. Johnson. It has been motioned and seconded. Are there any questions? Mr. Seymour, will you please call that vote?
Sure.
Mr. Verdi?
Aye.
Dr. Culetti?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mrs. Rugless?
Aye. Five-minute recess. Welcome back to the Wenton Woods City School Board of Education, April 26th, regular meeting. Mr. Seymour, will you please call that vote, the roll?
Sure.
Mr. Verdi?
Present.
Dr. Culetti?
Present.
Dr. Johnson?
Present.
Mrs. Rugless?
Present. Okay, the next item on the agenda is 5.01, which is comments for the Wenton Woods Teachers' Association. Do we have any representatives here? Seeing none, we'll move to 5.02, the Ohio Association of Public School Employees. Do we have a representative here tonight? Seeing none, we'll move on to 6.01, which is the approval of minutes. Board, unless you see any necessary changes, a motion will be in order.
Madam President, I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
I'll second.
Has been motioned and seconded. Are there any discussion or questions? Seeing none, Mr. Seymour, will you please call the vote?
Mr. Verdi?
Aye.
Dr. Culetti?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mrs. Rugless?
Aye. The vote passes unanimously. We'll move on to 7.01, the treasurer's recommendations. Mr. Seymour, you have the floor.
Yes, for the financial statements ending March 31st, for a summary. General fund year-to-date revenues are at 43.2 million. Month-to-date revenues for the month of March were four and a half million. Most of that was our state foundation and a real estate tax advance. Our expenditures for the year-to-date are at 38.1 million. And for the general fund, we are currently running approximately 7% under budget or four million dollars. The district's unencumbered funds for March 31st were at 43.5 million, 22 million in the general fund, and still there is 13.5 million left in our building construction funds. And that's basically a summary for the month of March. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
Thank you, Mr. Seymour. Are there any questions for Mr. Seymour?
No, no questions, but just a comment. I think in the work session we had this month, Mr. Seymour presented some general fund comparisons this year to last year, and we were very, we were pretty much flat from an expenditure standpoint. And the only reason I point that out is we are trying to be good stewards of the, the taxpayer dollars, so. Pretty good point.
Good point, Mr. Verdi. Are there any other comments or questions? Seeing none, with no objections being heard, let the financial statements for the month of March 2021 be submitted for audit. Mr. Seymour, it's back to you for 8.01.
Yes, for our investments for the month of March, it's so sad to see all these investments go down as our portfolio diminished with the construction. But for the month of March, we had $22,900. Of that, $8,500 was general fund, and we still were able to earn approximately $14,500 for the building funds.
Thank you, Mr. Seymour. Board, a motion is in order for the investment reports.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the investment report as presented. I'll second.
Has been motioned and seconded. Are there any questions or discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Seymour, will you please call the vote?
Mr. Verdi?
Aye.
Dr. Culetti?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mrs. Rugless?
Aye. Next item on the agenda is 8.02, the resolution accepting the amounts and rates. Mr. Seymour, back to you.
Yes, this is a resolution submitted to every taxing entity, all school boards, all municipalities that have taxing authority through Hamilton County. And as you know, we passed our tax budget back in January. Now, the Hamilton County Auditor has taken our tax budget, which showed that all taxes levied are needed for the operation of the district, and they have reset those tax rates and those amounts to be levied for the next, next tax year. And you're accepting the amounts and the rates as set by the Hamilton County Auditor. One thing I might point out is that the emergency levy that was turned into a continuing levy with no new taxes to the community, when we did that, the millage was 9.82. It's now down to 7.65 to generate the same amount of dollars. So I just thought I would share that for the upcoming year. And so basically, you're accepting the amounts and rates in this resolution, and I forward your acceptance down to the Hamilton County Auditor's office.
Thank you, Mr. Seymour. Board, a motion is in order?
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution accepting the amounts and rates as determined by the Budget Commission and authorizing the necessary tax levies and certifying them to the county auditor as presented.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Dr. Johnson. Mr. Verdi? It's been motioned and seconded. Are there any questions or discussion? Dr. Culetti?
I have a comment on the first paragraph, line four, members present. Does that need to be altered?
Yes, I will alter that before I send it down. I did not know Mr. McGowan's would not be here tonight. I'll remove his name and only have the four of you voting.
Thank you.
When I, before I forward it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Culetti.
Good catch.
Has been motioned and seconded. Well, we already did that. Seeing none of the more, any more questions, Mr. Seymour, will you please call that vote?
Mr. Verdi?
Aye.
Dr. Culetti?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mrs. Rugless?
Aye. The next items on the agenda is the super, reports of the superintendent. These are all informational reports, and no action will be taken, but Mr. Smith will give us time to ask questions. With that said, Mr. Smith, you have the floor.
Madam President and board, I know that my food service director and the nurses and teachers are usually up at 4:00 AM getting ready for work. Is it possible that we can move the resolutions and let them be presented now and read the resolution so they can get their proper rest?
Sure.
Can we move the, move, just change the agenda just a little?
That would be 10.07, 08, and 09. Yes.
Thank you, Madam President.
Yes, so we're going to start with 10.07, Resolution for National Teachers Appreciation Week. Dr. Johnson, you have the floor.
Yes, I'd like to read the resolution for the National Teachers Appreciation Week. Yes, I'd like to read the resolution for the National Teachers Appreciation Week. Whereas the week of May the 3rd through the 7th, 2021 is National Teacher Appreciation Week, and whereas the public schools have been a gateway to success for every generation of Americans, and whereas a strong effective system of public school education for all children and youth is essential to our democratic system of government, and whereas public schools are at work shaping the future of a whole new generation of young Americans who will take place, take their place in education, business, industry, and government, and whereas no other profession has so great an opportunity to make the lasting and life-changing impact on the lives of so many, and whereas teachers empower, inform, teach, enlighten, share, enrich, create, motivate, mentor, and touch the minds of those students they are entrusted with, and whereas is it appropriate for the Winton Woods City School District to pay tribute to the teaching profession as a whole and to recognize teachers for their dedication and for their commitment to challenge and educate the youth of our schools and community? Therefore, be it resolved that the Winton Woods City School Board of Education formally designates the week of May the 3rd through the 7th, 2021, as National Teacher Appreciation Week, adopted this day, 26th day of April, 2021.
Thank you, Dr. Johnson. Board, a motion is in order?
I'll make a motion to approve the Resolution for National Teacher Appreciation Week, May 3rd through the 7th, 2021, as presented.
I'll second.
Thank you. It has been motioned and seconded. Are there any questions or discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Seymour, will you call the vote?
Mr. Verdi?
Aye.
Dr. Cupoletti?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mrs. Rogless?
Aye. The vote passes unanimously. We will now move on to 10.8, 10.08, the Resolution of Nurse Day, as May 12th, 2021. And I will have the pleasure of reading that resolution. Whereas it is proper to acknowledge school nurses for their professional contributions to encourage and support a healthy environment and education of our nation's youth and for the students and staff of the Winton Woods City School District, and whereas school nurses provide a vital role to the institution of public education through their unique expertise for managing primary and preventative health care, and whereas school nurses are diligent, motivated, caring professionals who influence and promote a healthy school environment that is safe and conducive to learning. Be it therefore, resolve this 26th day of April, 2021, that Winton Woods City School District Board of Education hereby recognizes the continued effort, commitment, and resolve of school nurses to make a difference, and proclaims May 12th, 2021, as National School Nurse Day in the Winton Woods City School District, adopted this 26th day of April. Board, a motion is in order to approve the Resolution for National School Nurse Day as May 12th.
I'll make a resolution to approve the Resolution, National School Nurse Day, May 12th, 2021, as presented.
I'll second that.
It's been motioned and seconded. Are there any questions or discussion?
Madam President, this, this, I know it's a national day for nurses, but based on how our nurses have been working, it should be National Nurses Year.
Absolutely.
As well as teachers.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, so much this going on, and food and nutrition coming back. There's a lot going on. Well, it's been motioned and seconded. Mr. Seymour, will you please call the vote?
Mr. Verdi?
Aye.
Dr. Cupoletti?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mrs. Rogless?
Aye. Next item on the agenda is 10.09. Mr. Verdi, you have the floor.
School Nutrition Employee Week Official Proclamation. Whereas nutritious meals at school are an essential part of the school day, and whereas the staff of the district school, meals and nutrition department are committed to providing healthful nutritious meals to the district's children, and whereas the men and women who prepare and serve school meals help nurture our children through their daily interaction and support, and whereas the week of May 3rd through 7th, 2021, is School Nutrition Employee Week, now therefore be it resolved that Winton Woods City School District expresses its deep appreciation to these valuable employees and commends their good work on behalf of children, adopted this day, 26th of April, 2021.
Thank you, Mr. Verdi. Board, a motion is in order?
Madam President, I'd like to make a motion to approve the Resolution for School Nutrition Employee Week, May 3rd through the 7th, 2021, as presented.
I'll second.
It's been motioned and seconded. Are there any questions or discussion?
I do just want to thank you to Mr. Doctor and his staff for all they do. I mean, it's, it's hard to believe in this country we have issues with children getting food on a regular basis, and what you've done during the summer times, the, you know, nutrition is the mission, the buses and everything is phenomenal. And thank you to the administrative staff for, for what they have done to make this stuff happen, so, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Verdi. Mr. Seymour, will you please call the vote?
Mr. Verdi? Aye.
Dr. Cupoletti? Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mrs. Rogless?
Aye. Mr. Smith, did you want to add anything?
No.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you all for everything that you do. We really do appreciate it. And Mr. Smith, you're right. Some of the things that you have done to help manage and keep things moving for our system is, is very much appreciated. Thank you.
For sure.
Okay, so, we will move back to...
School report.
9.01.
9.01.
Yes, the only, the only thing that I want to add for the school report, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Appreciate it.
So, the only thing I want to add for the school reports is I, I brought an idea and I've talked it over with Mr. Denny, and I said, we could actually give our kids the prom that they deserve, but also do it in-house and, and save money at the same time. And we went with the food service department, Mr. Doctor and his team, amazing. No complaints, no issues. Dr. Martin was there, and she saw that the food and the amenities were absolutely top-notch. One of the things that you have to commend your, your building principal, Mr. Martin, he can turn a bad deal into a rainy, to an amazing day. And what he said was, you know, during proms, you know how the young ladies want to wear the latest shoes and gowns and all these other things that go along with it? He said, because of the, we're trying to save the gym floor and not let it become a disaster, he was very creative and said, this is going to be a sneaker gym shoe event. And I'm telling you, it was amazing. The other thing that I want to say about his ability to understand the terms and conditions of socioeconomic issues that our kids go through, a pair of shoes can be valuable. But in this particular situation, as you look at prom, and for those of you who've actually had the pleasure of attending, that pair of shoes never gets worn again. And it turns into something like, was it an asset or was it a liability? And, but we remember now, kids purchasing tennis shoes, they wear them many, many days. So, it actually was something that the parents really went for because it says, my child can use these shoes at other events and other occasions. So, bravo to Principal Martin and his team. But the prom, the decorations, the food, the, the, the environment was absolutely stellar. And I'm, all, all I can do is just give, just a proud pat on the back to everybody who, who supported the work and made it happen and made it alive for children because they enjoyed the entire event.
Thank you. Is this a result of anything from the prom?
I don't know where that came from, but I thought it looked pretty festive, so we just kept it up there.
Okay.
Okay, so, Mr. Denny was in charge of preparing the room. He left it there, so I figured it must be okay.
He did it for the facilities.
Yeah, yeah.
Update, which is 9.02.
Are we having Mardi Gras?
Yeah, it felt a little Mardi Gras.
Mr. D, we're ready.
Thank you again, Mr. Smith, and again, Board, good evening.
Good evening.
Is it, is it permissible to remove the mask while speaking here?
Oh, mask off.
Is that okay? Yeah, I thought so, I just wanted to make sure I was following the protocol.
I've been like, doing it like, all night.
Oh, thank you, okay. So, yeah, good evening again, everyone. So, we, I didn't know someone had left that here for, you know, educator appreciation or nurse appreciation, or, so, yeah, it just kind of blends right in. So, yeah, we'll claim it for the facilities update, why not? But, but in terms of that, we are entering a, a new chapter, a new phase in the construction process for the new facilities for the district. As you can see, the buildings are well over 99% complete. What you're looking at now is several scores of punch list items. And I think that's one of the interesting learnings for a lot of us who have not had the privilege of being a part of opening new buildings before is, it's a brand-new building, everyone thinks it's going to work perfectly, and yet, there's a lot of commissioning that as the end user you end up discovering. Even though we went over every room, you know, to punch list prior to, teachers and kids find things. And so, we're in the process of responding to those and making sure the building is in the absolute best functional condition that we can. So, that's going on now, particularly at this site, but what we learned here, we'll also transition to the South Campus to enable us to do that much more efficiently and effectively as well. So, we're continuing to carry out fixes on this building, but we're also entering the phase of site work and demolition. So, we have several million dollars at each site in site work. That's parking lots, stormwater improvements, drainage, signage, final asphalt, concrete, sidewalks, all of that kind of work, hardscape, that's coming at each site. But in order to do that, we have to complete the demolition of the existing sites on, on campus. So, I don't know if you had a chance to see the old modular classrooms? There's no teachers here, but there might be applause. They are, are no longer with us. O'Rourke took them out, out in about three days. They've also removed the footers and everything. So, that area is now prepped for conduit duct bank to make sure we keep all the correct utilities to our buildings that exist on campus, and it's also there to prepare for the eventual bus parking lot and turnaround that'll be in that area, and also the parking lot for staff that, that's in that area. So, we're well on our way there. Demolition of the middle school, I believe, was scheduled to begin today. Abatement completed, and they're going to roll it in phases, so they're abating and demoing as they go, and it's what's called a wet demolition. So, that'll control some of the dust and the things that we don't want to get airborne. That'll control that to a high degree. So, that's scheduled to start today. Because of our tours, I believe they may start the gated-off demolition until Thursday. That'll allow us to use some of that area as parking for the upcoming staff, excuse me, community tours tomorrow and Wednesday. So, that is essentially what's, what's happening right now in terms of construction process and the building updates. Happy to entertain any questions.
One other thing that we, there, the neighbors for this project, the amount of time and energy and patience that it took, the, the neighbor should be commended. But I think that one of the things that we tried to do, we, we were very transparent, since the day we walked back through the field, Mr. Denny, to see where the flood might be, we were very transparent with the community to say that the buildings are here, and now we need to communicate with you one more time, talking to you about the demolition. Because there will be dust, there'll be noise, there'll be things happening. But the more transparent we are with the community, the better it does work.
Yeah, absolutely. And I, I thank you for that, because that was, and well said, thank you. And we need to do that again before the major building demolition starts because it'll even be more noisy and more dirty. And, and, and our, our community members that live along the periphery of our property here have been fantastic.
Yeah, we didn't want the Arnold Schwarzenegger, "We're back" kind of thing, whoever says that. But once we get this part done, they will really just understand that the whole beautification project that goes along with it. So, thank you for your leadership with that work.
And thank you.
Mr. Board, do you have any questions for Mr. Denny or Mr. Smith for 9.02?
I don't have any questions, but I just want to say a really thank you, Mr. Denny, for, you know, leading the charge and making sure, and keeping us up to date on everything that's going on with the, with the buildings along the way, and just kind of reminding us to look back at the website and to see the pictures and like that, because sometimes I would just forget, like, I wonder what's going on. And then I would, the, this past weekend, I took a drive down to see the middle school, and I see the gate, and I'm like, how come I can't get in? I'm like, oh, because all the kids are back here, you know? So, but it's just exciting to see. It really, really is. Dr. Sandra D. said it best, you know, you know, it's been a long time coming, you know? So, we, we really are excited. So, I just thank you and appreciate all the people who have had so much to do with it, so.
Thank you. And, and we have a great team.
Yeah.
Dr. Johnson, we really do. And so, it's the people that have been shepherding this process, and I thank Mr. Smith, and I thank you as the board for allowing this kind of dialogue to occur, and happy that it's informative.
I will tell you about the late-night conversations that Mr. Denny and I have had. I would call him and say, what do you think about distributed dining? He says, what do you think about it? And I say, you think it's going to work? He said, you think it's going to work? And so far, guys, I have to tell you, that is absolutely, I've been a home run. It has been amazing. And the kids say, it feels like a collegiate campus where you can just move about. The administrators said, are also reporting that as far as the cleanup, every kid is taking care of their own area, and it makes it just a great experience. So, there we go.
Kudos. Thank you. Nicely done.
Comment, so what's the energy about, like, with the, the South Campus coming? What, what are you feeling? What are you hearing?
It's very positive. We had staff tours last week, so that's sort of what I'm basing my, my assessment upon. Very, very positive feedback. There was, and I have to share this, I'm glad you asked. So, a teacher I've known for probably 15 years came into the building and, and started crying, and just said, I've been waiting my whole career for this. And I just thought, wow, that, that is, that's special. And, and of course, not everyone reacted in those kind of terms. But I think that's the general feeling is, this has been a long time coming. So thankful to the community that this is now an option for the children, for the staff, for the community, frankly. And just thankful that we're where we are now and positioned the way we are as a district, I think.
The, the piece where Mr. Parker brought the power tools, I have to tell you, that does not happen. That, that is not the regular thing that SHP does. That does not happen. And so, I just wanted to bring it about. That was just a bonus opportunity. And he came, and he is not well, but he came because he says, this is very important. Mr. Denny and I spent some time with him in Tampa where we gave a presentation about buildings and what our buildings were going to look like. He is an honorable man, he is a great presenter, he loves his job. And I think that the information that we were able to embark on, the people that were there, people want to come and see these buildings.
And I will say this about Mr. Parker. From the time that we started, well, I started going to the meetings, Mr. Verdi, you know, we both sat in some of those meetings and did not stay through all of those meetings because it was a ton of meetings and a ton of work that went into the buildings. But we knew that, you know, this process was totally in capable hands because Mr. Parker, he started with his heart. And I heard his heart from the beginning, that he was in this just because he loved, loved, loved this district, and he wanted to give back. So, kudos to him, and tonight, we saw his heart as he spoke about the district, so. And, and, and Mr. Parker is one of many individuals who have, you know, that have a heart for the district, and it was really evident tonight in some of the presentations that went forward, that's bringing this together.
Absolutely. Very good, Mr. D, thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, the next items on the agenda is 10.01 through 10.09. Mr. Smith, do you want to just take us through those?
Yes, Madam President and Board, the recommendations to approve the exempt salary schedule as presented. You can see the effective date is April 1st, 2021, if you have your copy in front of you.
Ready for a motion?
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Board, a motion is in order?
Madam President, I'd like to make a motion to approve the exempt salary schedule as presented.
I'll second.
It's been motioned and seconded. Are there any questions or discussion?
This has not changed, right?
No, sir.
No.
Thank you.
Mr. Seymour, will you please call the vote?
Mr. Verdi? Aye.
Aye.
Dr. Cipuletti?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mrs. Ragland?
Aye. The vote passes unanimously. Ten point oh-two, Mr. Smith?
Yes, Madam President and Board, the recommendation is to approve Schedule A, resignations. Schedule B, personnel employment certificated, personal employment, personnel employment support staff. Schedule C, as well as personal employment certificated. Schedule D, including extra duties. And finally, the Schedule E, which is leaves, mostly FMLA.
Board, a motion is in order.
I'll make a motion to approve the personnel schedules as presented.
I'll second it.
It has been motioned and seconded. Are there any questions or discussion?
Just one thing I want to make as an observation on the resignations. I appreciate the new line item of the reasons, you know, being added to that, because it just kind of keeps our, you know, just our attention in the right spot. So, I just wanted to add that. I appreciate.
The other purpose of that, Dr. Johnson, when you see where someone resigned and they were in good standing and they relocated, that's an employee we might come back again.
Exactly.
You look at a perfect example. He wasn't our employee prior to, but you look at Carlton Gray coming back to his community, that's a possibility.
Right. Thank you. That's all I have.
Mr. Seymour, will you please call the vote?
Aye.
Dr. Cipuletti?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mrs. Ragland?
Aye. The vote passes unanimously. Ten point oh-three, Mr. Smith?
Yes, Madam President and Board, the recommendation is to approve the, I lost my place.
Summer school offerings.
To approve the summer school offerings as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Board, a motion is in order.
Madam President, I'd like to make a motion to approve the summer school offerings as presented.
I'll second.
It has been motioned and seconded. Are there any questions or discussion?
Just real quick, how quickly will this be disseminated to the public?
About what?
The offerings for the summer enrichment programs.
After tonight.
The Rollins have all of the information presented on our website by the second week in May.
Okay.
So that that gives the parents enough time to make arrangements and be able to partake in the various offerings that are going to be held for the four weeks, shall I say.
Okay. I just know that some, having a grandkid.
Yeah.
I know parents are looking at, what am I going to do with my kids in the summertime, so.
The Teaching and Learning Department, all three of them, have actually put a lot of time and energy. And it wasn't so much about drill and kill and remediation. They put some fun things in there for kids, because kids have missed those social pieces. So, one of their major emphasis was how do we deal with the whole child? So, thank you to you guys again.
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, I'd also like to note that that workshop three is kind of what you're talking about, Mr. Smith, right? Is throw that creativity and that back in there for the kids to do some things, so. Do you have some things that you're already planning to do, or?
Yes, actually, and some of the, the good thing about it is some of our administrators are going to join in and support the whole workshop three, where they're actually helping classes for that as well. So, they'll be able to have the, so have sports of all sorts. They'll be able to do gardening. I think one of the principals that are going to do gardening, we're doing yoga. We're doing various things just to kind of get the kids up and moving. And to make sure that we're focusing not just on the academic piece, but also giving them the ability to move around and kind of have fun with their peers as well. The enrichment piece also is, is one of the key things for the coding and the STEM activities. So, we'll be able to actually have that too.
Yeah, there's a course on, there's nobody that's signed up yet, but How to Be a Superintendent, and nobody's taken that course yet. And so, we're waiting. If I, I just want to get one person, okay? How to be a superintendent, so. All the kids are like, no, not interested, sir.
There are some really great opportunities. I know I asked Mr. Smith about thinking forward. You know, how do we offer things for the community, you know, that can be a nice hub for, you know, people to really come in and see all of the wonderful things and offerings that we're, we're having. We have a lot of things that are happening, that's happening in the school district, so forward-thinking, getting past, opening buildings, we shall see.
As we evolve, we're hoping that eventually our students become the guiders of the work. They teach in our summer program and use that as a resume builder. Because some of these kids have some amazing talents that we don't even know about. From musicianship to entrepreneurship, to building relationships and everything in between. So, imagine that young person is leading that charge, and he gets to put it on his resume that I led it in my school's summer school opportunity. That will be huge.
And that is, I see that in higher education, there was, there's a college up north, it's a work college. So, they have a lot of the students who are showing and guiding some things around to really get them excited about, you know, entrepreneurship and just anything that gets their skills up and confidence up. So, that's a great opportunity. So, it's been motioned and seconded. Are there any questions? No more questions? Okay. Mr. Seymour, will you please call that vote?
Mr. Birdy?
Aye.
Dr. Cipuletti?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mrs. Ragland?
Aye. Next, ten point oh-one.
Yes, Madam President and Board, ten point oh-one?
Oh, four.
Okay.
That's what I'm trying to get, go back. I'm sorry.
So, we, there is a MOU, a memorandum of understanding with the Teachers' Union, where we know that our teachers are just worn out. And we are hoping that a few faithful teachers can come back and actually lead our summer school with integrity. So, we've changed the hourly rate to, in competition with other districts that are like-minded, that we needed to change the rate to thirty-four dollars an hour for the month of June to July first, in order to get teachers to come out. We've set up different parameters where the teachers don't necessarily have to teach the whole week. Summer school runs Monday through Thursday. And the other thing, it can be shared attributes. They can share the opportunities. They can say, "I want to come two days, you come two days." Dr. Ragland and Dr. Martin and Mrs. Bray have put together the most inclusive package that you could ever imagine in order to draw teachers out to lead these kids through this next hurdle. You know, COVID did some devastating work, and now we have to be resilient to make sure that we overcome any obstacles that our children may face. So, the recommendation is to approve the hourly rate of thirty-four dollars an hour for summer school instruction for the period of June first through July first.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Board, a motion is in order.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the hourly rate of thirty-four dollars for summer school instruction for the period of June first, twenty twenty-one, through July first, twenty twenty-one.
I'll second.
Thank you. It's been motioned and seconded. Are there any questions or discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Seymour, will you please call the vote?
Mr. Birdy? Aye.
Dr. Cipuletti?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mrs. Ragland?
Aye. The next item on the agenda is ten point zero-five, the revised policy. Board, this is a second read, so I'll entertain a motion to approve the revised policy of five one one-three, unless, Mr. Smith, you had anything to add?
No, ma'am, we've gone over it extensively.
Okay. Madam President, I'd like to make a motion to approve the revised policy, PO five one one-three, the inter-district open enrollment as presented.
I'll second.
It has been motioned and seconded. Are there any questions for discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Seymour, will you please call the vote?
Mr. Birdy?
Aye.
Dr. Cipuletti?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mrs. Ragland?
Aye. The vote passes unanimously. Back to you, Mr. Smith, for ten point zero-six.
Yes, Madam President, I just want to make sure that you guys know this is not an era. Our district calendar is two years in advance, so we can make sure we get all our professional development in, make sure all our speakers are aligned up through teaching and learning. And so, the recommendation is to approve the district calendar for twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three school year as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Board, a motion is in order.
Madam President, I'd like to make a motion to approve the district calendar for twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three school year as presented.
I'll second.
It has been motioned and seconded. Are there any questions or discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Seymour, will you please call the vote?
Mr. Birdy? Aye.
Dr. Cipuletti?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mrs. Ragland?
Aye. The vote passes unanimously. Mr. Smith, ten point oh-seven. Oh, no, we already did those, I'm sorry. All right, that moves us to the Board of Education report. So, I have eleven point oh-one, which is the legislative report. I'd like the board to be aware of the following. House Bill sixty-seven that provides the assessment and graduation flexibility passed on three twenty and became effective immediately. There will also be a webinar on Friday, March thirtieth, to provide an overview of the, of the House-passed version of the substitute House Bill one-ten. That's the state's two-year budget bill. I will send the link out to you later. And, Mr. Birdy, you may be interested in that one, so if you definitely want me to, I'll forward it on to you. Also included in the substitute House Bill one-ten was House Bill one, the Fair School Funding Plan. And the Fair School Funding Plan brings tax dollars home to local communities and provides the ability to school districts' budgets. We'll, we'll see where that goes. And then OSBA has, they've launched this initiative. I sent it out via Facebook and to other people. It's, it's the launch, the Get On On Board Campaign, and it's their effort to try and find, get people interested in running for the school board. Here's what I do know, is board members will not be on the board forever. So, if anyone's interested, the Get On The Board Campaign is some place where you can get information. I've been getting emails from different people regarding this campaign. And there's upcoming seminars. There's the Transportation State Reports and Cost Analysis, the School Attorney Workshop, and Reasonable Suspicion Training. That's coming up. And that's all that I have for the legislative reports. Mr. Smith, do you have anything that you want to add?
Very, very accurate. That's, those are the main things that are happening in Columbus.
Okay. The next item on the agenda is eleven point zero-two, which is, that goes to Mr. Birdy, Great Oaks.
Thank you. The Great Oaks Report. As far as senior ceremonies for Scarlet Oaks students, that'll happen on May nineteenth, and that's where the majority of our students, it might even be a hundred percent at this point, attend. Will be on May nineteenth at six-thirty. They're going to plan on holding it outside, behind the Scarlet Oaks campus. They do have a rain plan, in case it does rain that night, to bring it inside. So, if you have children in Scarlet Oaks, we'll be happy to see you there that night, or anybody else that wants to attend. Included in my report that I emailed to the board members and Mr. Seymour and Mr. Smith, there's a CEO report, an update for Mr. Harry Snyder, who's the CEO, a legislative update, and updates that they give, a Diversity and Unity Committee report, as well as a Spotlight on Student report. We had five students from Winton Woods that were recognized in this report. Keith Beasley, Marcus Johnson, Martyrial Ward Jr., and Landon West were given the Scarlet Citizenship Awards. And Yadira Perez is going to be a Hope Squad intern with Grant U.S. Hope. And that concludes my Great Oaks Report.
Thank you. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is twelve point oh-one, which is the Board of Education's motions and recommendations. Board, are there any motions or recommendations at this time? Seeing none, we'll move on to three, thirteen point oh-one, which is comments from the members of the Board of Education and the Superintendent and Treasurer. We'll start with Mr. Seymour.
I have nothing tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Birdy?
Just real quickly, I think Ms. Dees said it best, as far as us being blessed to be in this new building. It's a wonderful thing that we're here. Thank you to anybody and everybody that was involved in that. As always, thank you to the teachers, nurses, food service workers, bus drivers, everybody involved in this crazy world that we've had to go through over the last year and a half or so. You know, I know we have a, hopefully, I'm not getting in trouble with Mr. Smith here, but we have a higher number of students that are eligible for the Ohio Honors Diploma this year than we had the year before, than we had the year before that. So, ACT scores look like they're moving upwards over the last couple of years. So, you know, I think there's a lot of good news going on here and pretty excited about what's going on.
Thank you, Mr. Birdy. Dr. Cipuletti?
I'd like to reiterate appreciation for the teachers, the nurses, nutrition employees, all the other workers in the district, the people who made this building happen in each and every way. And using some of the benchmarks that Mr. Birdy mentioned, I'd like the district to know that our district does an excellent job in preparing young people for the future. And thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Cipuletti. Dr. Johnson?
Yeah, I just want to reiterate what former board members have already said, just, but also want to send a thank you out to Superintendent Smith and Treasurer Seymour, because they work diligently behind the scenes. And many times, people don't realize the influence that they have in the work that goes on. And also congratulate the students and the teachers and administrators for their contribution to, and their dedication to our district, to Dr. Sandra Dees and to Mr. Jeff Parker for, Dr. Dees has been on board with us from day one. I mean, she's been very passionate. And just to let, remind everybody that we do still have a, a operating levy that's out there that we still need your support. We have the buildings now. We need to be able to run them efficiently and effectively and with the right amount of security and the things that we need, so to remind the, our community of that. The official proclamations, we, you know, we do this, we read this once a year, but know that you're more important than just once-a-year proclamation. You know, everybody stepped out of their box and worked in a different kind of way. And so, and it still worked. I mean, I look at some of, and I'm not trying to say, you know, compare what our district has done, but I look at some of the troubles that some of our other districts have had. And our directors of teaching and learning, our executive directors, really came together and made this thing work for our students and getting, and Mrs. Hobbs with getting the technology out. There was just so many pieces of this puzzle that just came together, you know? And Mrs. Bray and, and, you know, it's just, it's just, it was amazing to watch, but it was even more amazing to be a part of it and to watch it, you know? And just to see you all's dedication for that. Looking forward to the grand opening of the South Campus in August. And just to mention that myself and President Ragland and Superintendent Smith did have a meeting with Mr. Brown of the Forest Park Council. And just kind of, we want to kind of breathe some life back into that, that relationship, because we had, we were having meetings pretty regularly, and they've kind of stopped. So, we're hoping that that's the start of many more meetings. And he, we just kind of sat down and talked with him and told him like our protocol, how things work, and how we, how, what systems we have in place, you know? Because sometimes, if you don't understand the systems, you don't understand why things are going the way that they're going, you know? So, we just kind of talked to him about those things. Also, Mr. Birdy mentioned the honors diplomas, that they're up. Our appreciation dinner or whatever for them is going to be. whatever for them is going to be May the 14th, and of course, graduation, they had the prom, which was really, really great for our students' morale, and we will have a graduation on May the 20th, looking forward to that and just, I mean, we say thank you, but sometimes you just can't say it enough. We do appreciate the work that you do and Superintendent Smith and Treasurer Seymour, we really appreciate you, you know? Maybe you don't hear it often enough, but we appreciate the work that you do, so that's it.
Thank you, Dr. Johnson. Mr. Smith?
Yes, Madam President, two things. Special recognition to Mrs. Bray. She's working on a plan right now because students with disabilities, you guys know, have a very difficult time with transition. They are not familiar with the new building, they're familiar with their old space, and so she's working with another team to set up some special tours for them and their families so they can see what this new space is going to look like and not just thrust them into it. They're used to their own little small environment and now they'll have a bigger one to select from, and so thank you for having the vision to know, our students with disabilities don't like change, but if we do it with integrity, they may learn to appreciate it. And then the other one is, we have been voted in again as the Music Merchants NAM, the National Association of Music Merchants, we have received that honor again, so thanks to the entire music department for launching that because we are getting it now consecutive years.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. And I'll try not to repeat what everyone has said, but the one thing that I will repeat is to make sure that you vote May 4th for the levy support. It's very, very important to continue the work. I'm here to tell you that there is a lot of good things that are happening. Some of the things that Mr. Bertie talked about on the academic side, that things are, are going in the right direction. And I also want to thank Mr. Smith and the Teaching and Learning Team, all three of you ladies who, you know, I don't think we all saw the value of the three plans that we had in place, but the three plans and having very knowledgeable individuals to be able to pivot to make that work during the pandemic has been awesome, so thanks again, and like Dr. Johnson has said, we can't say it enough, thank you, because we have seen school districts that really struggled in trying to get things going, coupled with Ms. Hobbs' support with technology, so again, thank you for that. I just, I also want to say, I think, you know, it was really good to hear from the coaches, to, to hear their hearts. I mean, it just really solidified that we don't get shaken by change, we adjust to change, and it seems like we have adjusted really well with the selection of the individuals who will be joining our team or continuing with our team. Also, can't stop thinking about little Taylin Westmoreland. I cannot wait to go to her book signing, what a blessing. We had the other young lady who, who had a cooking show, I mean, there's so, so many rich things that are happening and, and to your point, Ms. Dr. Kupuletti, that we are preparing children, and some of the children are already coming prepared, to be clear, we're just an incubator for helping those talents come out, so it's just a blessing to be a part of that. As far as Springfield Township, I have reached back out to them, I think I copied you, Mr. Smith, on an email, because we have some work in, in continuing to build that partnership. And Tanya Bray, I, you know, and thank you for saying that about Tanya, I always call her the student whisperer. I literally have been in.
At times it's a whisper, other times it could be a roar, I just want to let you know.
I, I witnessed it firsthand and Tanya's approach is very similar to a lot of the approaches that we have, it's very intentional, it's very, it's thinking outside of yourself and saying, how can I make this better? And so, yes, thank you for thinking about our students with disabilities because they are very, 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 very important to our, our tribe here. And lastly, I'll say, not lastly, I have one more, thank you, Mr. Smith, I don't know, board members, I don't know if you noticed that we have a shared drive to help, to help improve communication, so thank you, Ms. Hobbs, for helping, whatever, the team, the team, thanks team for getting that shared drive, because oftentimes we'll talk about documents, I know I'll forget about them, but now having that shared drive, we can just go in and access that, so thank you, thank you, thank you very much. And lastly, it is good to have Dr. Kupuletti back with us. I am so happy to have you here. So thank you, thank you, thank you, and we missed you.
And as far as the shared drive, that's definitely Ms. Hobbs all the way. Before your email could be finished, it was already done. So, thank you, Ms. Hobbs.
Thank you. And board members, I also sent an email, I don't know if you saw it, about how do we streamline the look of our emails? I haven't done it yet, Ms. Hobbs has given me that instructions two times, but I'll get it done, so thank you.
Ms. Ragland, I have one, one other comment. I, I think Mr. Denny said it best, okay, the buildings are up, they're new, and one of the things that we have to let the audience, whoever is kind of tuning in to Waycross, that there will be some transitions that happen in the building, everything doesn't quite work right, but I can tell you, he's working diligently to refine it, to make it work, and there's all, there's something happening every day, I'm just letting you know, some of those are not great things, but we turn them into positive outcomes. So thank you, Mr. D, for the times where I'm calling your phone a thousand times saying, what about this, what about that? I appreciate your patience and your commitment to our district.
And placing balloons. Okay, that brings us to 15.01, which is a German, so if there is nothing else, I'd like to thank our Waycross Media partners. And with that said, I will call the Wynton Woods City School District Board of Education Regular Meeting on Monday, April 26, 2021, adjourned. Thank you, good night, and stay healthy.